Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Lafayette City Council meeting today, Thursday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty P M. If you please rise.
I pray to the flag that we guys stand on our own and to the republic for what it stands on nation under God.
Kennedy, can you please call roll?
Counselor Paulson, present.
Counselor Burrows.
Here.
Counselor Criswell.
Present.
Okay, Colin. Counselor Kit, here. And Mayor Malcolmson.
Here, okay, we have a quorum, so we will continue on. First up tonight is appointment of Craig Mackey to the unexpired city council seat term to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-six. There's no staff report for this, this is, yeah. I don't know if council needs any more information than what it, is there a staff report? Oh, never mind, there's a staff report, Brandon, can you please give staff report?
Uh, big amendment mayor, B V S counselor, Tom Reed, had resigned from the city council and was accepted at the February council meeting. Mayor had opened up the application process for thirty days to facilitate applications. And the period was from the fourteenth of February to thirteenth of March. We had a few people had applications come in at that time. And then I think at that time Mayor Malcolm also included everything in the span going back thirty-sixty-five calendar days. So there were like four applications in that total, and those are the ones you have in front of you today and.
Okay.
On you.
All right, I'm going to appoint Craig Mackey to the vacant city council position with an unexpired term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay. Maybe we all roll, oh, wait, I have on the table a motion to appoint Craig Mackey to the vacant city council position with an unexpired term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, Kennedy, will you please call roll vote?
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Burrows?
Hi.
Counselor Criswell?
Hi.
Counselor Kit?
Hi.
Okay, that says welcome on board. So, um, and we'll go ahead and get your swearing in, oh, not out of the way, but we'll do that first and foremost, and then we will officially welcome you on. Where would you like him?
Oh, no. What are y'all gonna do? Need D and B background?
All right.
It's okay if I get a picture?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, I, the in.
I, Craig Mackey.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution.
Solemnly swear that I will support the constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
And the ordinances and policies of the city of Lafayette.
And the ordinances and policies of the city of Lafayette.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of councillor.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of councillor, of office of councillor.
Yeah. And just say here.
Let's go.
We'll let the ink half dry.
As I say, I haven't signed yet.
No, that's just, that's just. So, counselor Mackey will have you come join us now, counselor Criswell, you're not on your own on this firm, on this table.
We'll see y'all soon, thank you, congratulations, Craig.
Thanks, buddy.
Kayla, keep up some good job.
Um, I know that counsel I sent to you guys just a copy of the letter I sent counselor Mackey, sharing with him why I selected him, so I won't spend time tonight on that. That is in public record if someone wants it. That's not on council, but Craig, is there anything, sorry, counselor Mackey, is there anything you'd like to say to introduce yourselves?
Uh, yeah, so Craig Mackey, I am a nine-year resident of Lafayette. I have a wife and two kids who are growing up in the community, one of which is attends washer. Her name is Marley, and she is nine or ten years old, and then Hendrix, who is my four-year-old. We are both active parents in the community, and I work at ADEC in Newburgh. I've been there for the past seventeen years, and for the last three years, I've been a leader for the engineering and customer service department team where I oversee a group of twenty-three individuals. I'm, was offered this opportunity, it came to light, and I thought, what better time when it's my kids to get involved and have children kind of growing up in the community? What better way to get perspective and enjoy meeting the people I live amongst and have some involvement in the community, so, thank you.
Okay, and as I shared with counselor Mackey, unfortunately, I've got a few turns under our belt of having a new appointment. I kind of not slowed down the meeting, but I do verbally share a little bit more of steps and whatever, just to help that first night on. Counselor Mackey does have a packet, although he is more than welcome if he feels unprepared or not ready to make a vote to abstain tonight, but I do hope you join in. So with that, citizen input on non-agenda items, was there anyone that signed up?
I don't hope so.
I don't think so, because the other people in this audience are, okay. Um, then I don't even need to do last thought, we will move on from that. Additions and deletions from the agenda, I would like to add a proclamation for April being Child Abuse Awareness Month. We inadvertently did not get that coordinated as we usually do most years to have it prior. So I, if council's okay with adding that, we'll just add that. Can we just say to five point five, so we don't have to change the numbers for the rest? Okay, so we'll just add it to right after this, is council okay with that? Okay, so with that, I would like to quickly introduce. Oh, okay, never mind, I'll let Brandon have input.
Um, I'd like to, in nine discussions, push nine C down to nine D and make nine C a wastewater treatment facilities plan update, since we have Gordon here, I figured we'd just have a little update on that and some of the things he's seeing in that while he's here, so. And that'll be nine C.
Nine C, and then that moves to C to D.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you kind of read my mind, I was thinking about that this week, that we probably reduce for one of those. I'm good with that, is everyone okay with moving that on, okay? Any other additions or deletions? Okay, so then we will move to five point five, which is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we do have a representative from Julie Hutt's house, did you want to share anything? I don't want to put you on the spot, but, okay. Um, so with that, I'm just going to read this, and then Brandon, is it correct, then we do take a vote to accept it?
I'll just, mayoral proclamation.
Oh, that's right, because it's not a resolution, it's a proclamation. Sorry, I was at the board commissioners meeting this morning, they did theirs as a resolution, and they had to, no votes, okay. So, proclamation, whereas child abuse is considered to be one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders, and whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of eighteen, and in two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and sixty-four thousand contacts were made to the Oregon Child Abuse Hotline. A total of forty-five thousand two hundred and eight received reports were assigned to CPS assessment. Of all completed CPS assessments, seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-one were founded for abuse and involved eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-one victims. And whereas the physical, emotional, mental, and financial impact of abuse falls on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, and social backgrounds, and these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas the effective child abuse prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic and community organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas the city of Lafayette is dedicated to strengthening child abuse survivors and their non-offending families in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our community and working to prevent abuse and neglect, now therefore, I hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-five to be National Child Prevention or Child Abuse Prevention Month. So be it. Did you, um, I know you're not gonna say though, then did you want a picture real quick, so you didn't have?
Okay, great.
Brandon, will you take a picture, and then I can send it to you if you want?
Oh, yeah.
And I'll send you a copy of this.
Okay.
We love our, that, my pop board, it's sounding.
Two, three.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I sent you my.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Um, seven, consent agenda, so this is city council meeting minutes. Is everyone fine keeping it on consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just need a motion for that. There's a motion to approve a consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Okay. Since it's consent agenda, there's no need for discussion, uh, Kennedy, can you please call roll vote?
Counselor Kit?
Hi.
Counselor Criswell?
Yeah.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Burrows?
Hi.
And just clarification, am I calling counselor Mackey as well? Okay, counselor Mackey?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, motion passes, consent agenda accepted and approved. Moving on to number eight, which is our action items. Approval of mutual agreement and final order with the Oregon D E Q. Brandon, can you please give staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, as shared last month at the council meeting, the January two thousand twenty-four notice of civil penalty assessment from the December twenty-two, that's a lot of dates, December two thousand twenty-two wastewater plant inspection. We knew this day was coming, so in front of us is the official settlement that you all allowed the city staff to work on. This shows the total civil penalty assessed of the seventy-three thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The D E Q has agreed to mitigate fifty percent of that penalty on a qualifying project, which will be the next thing you all vote on. And then remaining, the cash payment of three thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars will be taken out of the sewer material, materials and services budget. And this is kind of the first step we need, but we'll have one year to complete everything from the date this is signed. Luckily, the payment will be executed this next week if approved, as well as I know Gordon and Greg are both hanging by the thread waiting for us to sign invoice to get the other, the other work done at Canyon View with the, with the pumps and everything. So, if you, if there is gonna be a motion, I did confirm with David, since this is a settlement offer, the mayor actually has to execute this agreement. So in the motion, instead of saying city administrator, if you want to then put mayor to execute the agreement, that would be great. If there's any questions, I'll take them from here.
I, no, sorry.
I was gonna ask a question real quick, um, taking this out of the, out of our, our fund, our budget line item, are we gonna be short on that budget line item now?
No, well, luckily, luckily, materials and services is the totality of all the materials and services area, so we're gonna take it out of that actual, we'll find ways to take it out of the, I think there's, uh, what, can, not Kennedy, Jamie said, uh, we have some money under contingency that we would take it out of, because we have, we have a budget for it, but it fall on the materials and services. And I've let the public works team know that we will be going tight the rest of the year on the budget, since, you know, we didn't really plan to spend thirty-six thousand dollars. So Greg and myself will be monitoring the rest of the sewer budget the rest of the year, but we don't foresee any issues where we would encroach on the, the final figure. So, just we're good.
I move to approve the mutual agreement and the final order, order with Oregon D E Q and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Okay, okay, I have on the table a motion to approve the final mutual agreement and final order with Oregon D E Q and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Any further or final deliberation? Okay, uh, Kennedy, can you please call roll?
Counselor Criswell?
Right.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Mackey?
Hi.
Counselor Kit?
Hi.
And Counselor Burrows?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. I will get with you to sign that, and hopefully that is last one, I know that that preceded this current council to. Okay, um, uh, A, B, approval of Cannon D pump station repairs for thirty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-four. Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, with the preceding approval, we now have in front of you the fifty percent reimbursement of the SCP project, which we discussed at the last meeting, and thank you to both Greg and Gordon for working as fast as they could with D E Q on doing the SCP application and getting it in, but this will go ahead and it'll be a pump and suction line installation. And luckily, with the future vote of the Bridge Street Bridge being done, if approved, the Cascade Water Works will be out to install the line before we do the work at the Canyon View, so we're not doing, we're not doing Canyon View and then tearing the work up, and then having the sewer department spending money to replace that work that was done. So that'll be done, and then we'll also be able to, G P E C will be out here to get all of the electrical system items upgraded with that as well. Am I missing anything, Greg?
I think you know, but.
Hey, any council questions?
One question.
Go ahead.
Let, I know she keeps count. On the, well, I can put them all into one, on the Cascade Water Works, it says the expiration date was yesterday, I'm sure, I'm sure that that's already thought of.
Yeah, yeah, well, okay, because when they don't make us an invoice, they give it to us like thirty days ago, and we needed to use that for D E Q, I don't, Greg, they're not gonna have an issue with us getting it tomorrow, right?
No, they'll carry that, that, that quote over. Okay, and then, uh, under one of, one of the bullet points, all excavated material will be hauled off and disposed of at Lafayette Wastewater Facilities, does that also include the old discharge piping and anything else that comes out of that hole? Or is it just the excavated material? Uh, I'm gonna request that they haul the old piping off, we have no use for it. Right. The, the native soil, yeah, we can take it down there. I just, you know, wanted to look as good as it can when it's all done, you know, and if we don't, don't want to leave stuff laying around.
So I think that was, the stuff that we can reuse is getting hauled.
Right.
And then they'll remove the rest as part of.
Yeah, it's a nice slope of work.
Yeah, it doesn't say that they were gonna haul away the old discarded pipe, but.
Okay.
That was to help kind of save a little bit of monies and hauling fees for them to dispose, dispose of the soil off-site, off city property and pay to dump it. Sure. I'm sure we can do that, okay.
And, Brandon, this completes the fifty percent for the D E Q.
Correct, and then, then Monday, you'll be signing a check, that'll be cut, that'll have the, the fines, the monetary fines, and that'll be, this will be complete before the end of the year, and then once the project's done, and I get the approval that the payment's been made, I will update the council, you know, when this is closed out. And we can be done with this finally after two and a half, three years.
Okay. Okay, um, any questions from the audience? Okay, um, if there's a motion.
I move to approve both invoices for repairs at the Canyon View Pump Station totaling thirty-nine thousand one twenty-four and to pay out of the sewer capital outlay fund and authorize the city administrator to execute the contracts.
I'll second. Okay, I have on the table a motion to approve both invoices for repairs of the Cannon View Pump Station totaling thirty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and to pay out of the sewer capital outlay fund and authorize the city administrator to execute the contracts. Any final council deliberation? Okay, Kennedy, can you call a roll vote?
Counselor Burrows?
Hi.
Counselor Mackey?
Hi.
Counselor Kit?
Hi.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Criswell?
Hi.
Okay, approved. Moving on, um, H C, Acceptance of Bridge Street Improvement Project Bid, Brandon.
I'm gonna defer that to Senator Mayor, Gordon Munro.
Welcome, Gordon.
All right. Uh, so I'll just go through the letter. So we had a bid opening April third, uh, two club, it's virtual. There was six bidders, we have five good bids, uh, one of them didn't turn in the first tier form, if you guys don't know what that is, it's a requirement from the state, and they have two hours after the bid opening to turn that in. Oftentimes, if they're not the low bidder, they just won't turn it in, and we can't officially accept their bid without it, so. They weren't the load, they didn't turn it in, so we can't look at their bid, it doesn't really matter. Low bid was Roy Howke Construction, two hundred and eighty-three thousand nineteen dollars, they have sufficient experience, expertise. They do this work all the time, we check the contractor board, they're in good standing, they have good references. They appear to be an appropriate and experienced firm to do this type of work. Uh, that is for all four schedules, and the engineer's estimate was significantly higher, five hundred and forty-seven thousand. High enough that I want to tell you why.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, so typically, when we do bid estimates, I will tell you that suppliers and whatnot, they know that we're not doing construction, so oftentimes, they won't give us numbers. So what we do is we go look at, uh, other bids. Uh, local bids, um, for the same type of projects, and we look at what are called unit costs. So a unit cost is, you're gonna do five hundred tons of asphalt, you don't just say, give me five hundred tons, you say, give me a cost per ton. So the unit cost per ton is, let me get it, say it's a hundred and twenty dollars, and then you multiply it out to get your bid. So we used bid tabs, actually, from Lafayette on a very similar project, and tabs from Carlton and Jervis and Donald, so.
And if they let me know if we need to stop.
So, similar towns, similar sizes, similar projects, and those are the, the unit prices that we use. We don't use the high, we don't use the low, we go into the middle. So, you know, I was comfortable with our estimate based on that, because it's actual numbers. What we have found out this year is that there seems to be not very many paving projects out. And lots of the bids are coming in low, you know, on certain projects, uh, they've actually, contractors have actually said, we're, we cut out our profit, we just want to keep our people busy, so we don't have to lay people off. So it's, it's a bid atmosphere thing, effect, that's going on. And that's, that's the only thing I can say about, about that, and that, you can't predict that. And there's more bidders, there are six bidders.
There's more bidders for this project than there was for the last one that we did, right? I think there was only three.
I was really surprised, like, happily surprised that we had.
Yeah, and not too long ago, we were getting one and two bids on projects. So, construction market is getting tighter, that means bids start to go down.
Okay.
So, uh, good news for you guys, it means you have some options if you want. You could do more through chained orders, or you could save that money and for your next, next year. So there, there are options, I know that Brandon has talked about adding the pedestrian crossing at bridge and the highway as a changer.
So wait, that's not part of this, Brandon?
No, no, because remember I said, because the permits, we were having issue getting the permits from MoDOT.
But the, so the price of this does not include?
No, but we have that separately, yeah, we still have half the money on that, so the last half of money we have is for that crossing.
We're still working through, oh, no, not that, but we should be able to get that in time that we could add that as a changer. So that's one potential that you, you have, you can always do more paving as well. Uh, so our recommend, well, let me do one more thing. If you look at the bid tab, uh, Ray Howke was low bid on three out of four schedules. Uh, so, the way that these are set up is that the project gets awarded to one contractor based on whichever schedules you guys decide to award. And so it's accumulative, you don't pick the low bid on everyone and get four or five contractors out there, right? That becomes a mess. So they are the overall low bid for the project. And our recommendation is that you award the project to Howke uh, for the bid amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand nineteen dollars. And the actual award would have to wait until the protest period is up. So this is another Oregon law that says you have to send out a letter of intent to award that starts a one-week protest period.
The estimate, right?
Right, yeah. And so you have to wait until that occurs, and if you do, and there's no protest, then nobody can protest ever. If you don't do that, you could fund the project and somebody could still protest.
And what are they protesting?
The, the bid.
The bid, okay.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the only people that can protest a bid are other bidders, right?
Okay.
So, we wait, wait that week, if we don't get a protest, we're good, then we can just go.
Okay, and, shoot, I had a, never mind. Oh, did, and we vetted, I know that we don't want to pay more than we want, right? But we vetted and looked into the companies.
It says right there that they did.
Yes.
I know, I'm just double checking, okay.
So, what kind of hoops you have to just jump through to add more?
You mean a change orders?
To, to change, if we wanted to add, uh, more to that, to that project. Easy.
It's easy?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to go back out there, you're, they're already under contract, change orders are a standard part of construction. Okay. Um, I think, and I don't know, but Brandon's probably got authority for a certain dollar amount, and if it goes over that dollar amount, then it comes to you for approval. I don't know what that dollar, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, so, we have a change order less than that, Brandon can approve it, if it's more, it comes back to you.
Okay, so Brandon, do you prefer us finalizing, accepting this before discussing possible change orders? Or should that all be discussed before we accept?
I would prefer, because the budget's already pretty much been drafted, and that savings is put into next year, so we can talk about it on Monday. Because I, I, I think we've kind of looked at some streets to do next fiscal year, but I mean, it's, if you're the policymakers.
Yeah, but do you want us to talk if there's, if there's interest in doing opposite of that, of what you suggest? Is it best to have that discussion now before we accept this bid?
Yeah, because like.
Okay.
The budget's already done, so I need to, we pretty much redo the budget then, because I put the money into next year, but I can, I mean, I can.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying is, do we need to have that discussion before we vote this, or at, at the end of, or before we move on to?
I don't, I don't think I understand your question, man.
Can I, can I?
Yes.
This stands alone.
Okay, that's perfect.
Okay, change orders come during, during the project, and you make decisions when they come up.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward with if there is a motion, and then before we move on to our next line item, there can be a chance real quick, if anyone wants to just, if they think that there needs to be change orders immediately, if not, say, till Monday.
I move to award the Bridge Street Improvement Project to the low bidder, Roy Howke Construction, for two hundred and eighty-three thousand nineteen dollars, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have on the table a motion to award the Bridge Street Improvement Project to the low. Okay, I have on the table a motion to award the Bridge Street Improvement Project to the lowest bidder, Roy Hawk Construction. For two hundred and eighty-three thousand nineteen dollars and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract. Any further deliberation? Okay, Kennedy, can you please call roll vote?
Counselor Carswell?
Hi.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Counselor Mackey?
Hi.
Counselor Kay?
Hi.
Counselor Buras?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Hope we're doing this.
Okay, so real quick before we move on, is there anyone that feels the need to discuss? Now or save it to Monday?
Oh, Monday.
Sounds good to me, okay.
But we'll let Brandon sleep.
Okay. I would just highly suggest that if there is any thinking on anyone's mind that doesn't go along with his suggestion. Of saving it to give Brandon a heads up before Monday. Personal, like, reach out to Brandon. Um, okay, um. So now we are on to nine discussions. Nine A, engineer, city engineer rates for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Well, we got ya. Welcome back.
Yeah, so um. The way that the hourly rates are set up for. City engineering is everybody else that's working on the project is cost plus ten percent. So that's how it's set up. We gave you a specifically, specific hourly rate for me. It was a cut rate, so it's less than the ten percent. That has not uh, kept up with inflation right now. We're actually losing money on me working. Uh, for the. The city, so we wanted to adjust that. Potentially put it on a multiplier that just. Covers my rate. And maybe a little bit more, but still give you a cut rate. Compared to the rest of the. Staff, so that's, that's the adjustment that we want to make. It's just on my rate, not anybody else's.
For clarification, in our staff report, it says rate adjustment in several years. What is the number of, what, several year?
Like, last rate, I think it was twenty-twenty, right? I think Person had done twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've adjusted.
Okay, and is that typical, Brandon, to, uh, every few years, or is it usually you?
I, he's probably the first engineer, and you might wanna cover your ears. That doesn't get um, a trigger every fiscal year.
Okay.
Uh, most engineers would do that. He's not proposing that, which I think is pretty good.
Okay.
So.
So this is just more information coming at us that.
Yes.
Where that come.
Cause next month, he'll, he'll actually send me a formal uh, rate, and I will bring that to you all next month. While you hear it from the engineers, um, the engineers thinking and.
So are we just adding that to the beginning of our main meeting, since our meeting is supposed to be as. True as. Possible.
It'll probably be like this, and then, but it'll be, it'll be in terms of this weekend.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, thank you again, Gordon. Um, so nine, the presentation of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four audit. Brandon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so we have Devin with um, uh, REDW Advisors. Some of you may be saying, who's REDW Advisors? They um, acquired um, Grove Mueller, who's been doing our budgets now for over in fifteen years. Um, if not longer, so um, instead of Ryan, who you all know, Ryan, um, Devin will be presenting virtually. And Devin, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, I can see you all as well, except. Except Brandon, I'm looking at your back of your head.
Brandon, if you wanna slide, it's up to you, since uh, Counsel Gilgan's missing.
He's not missing, he's just not here.
Well, he's, yeah, he's not. Yeah, he's homesick. Um, we know where he is.
Yeah, no, um, if you wanna go ahead, um, the, the council had the audit emailed them about two weeks ago, when you supplied it to Jamie and I. It's also in the packet. If you want to go ahead and use a screen share or anything, you can go ahead.
Okay, I, I won't need that. Brandon, I wanna thank you for your accommodation of allowing me to do this. Virtually, it, it really helps. Um. So as, as Brandon mentioned, my name's Devin Ash. I'm a principal with the firm REDW. And we merged with them back in November of oh-three, so we, we've just barely got past our one year. And heading into our second year, and so far, so good. Lot of, a lot of training has gone on. Uh, things will be smoother, I guarantee you, Brandon. We, we uh, have had a lot of challenges with the merger, but things seem to be working them. Working themselves out. I won't take up a lot of your time, I'll just kind of hit the highlights. Um, the big things, there were no minimum standard violations. That is fantastic. No budget transfers. No management letter. And if, if we would have found something and we thought it was egregious enough to bring it to the council, you would have gotten a formal. Uh, management letter that said, here's the issues that we saw. Here's how uh, administration. Chose to deal with it and were satisfied. He didn't have anything, nothing to report. Everything went really well. Um, and there were no relevant AJEs, which means. I mean, we're in the, we're in the April already of the next year. Last year, the year under audit, up till now, we have had no journal entries. For the numbers, so whatever you saw back at June thirty of twenty-twenty-three. Um, those numbers held true all the way through the end of the year. I will just jump right in. I'm not one to go through page by page, you've got a lot better things to do than that, so. The most important thing as far as auditors go is the independent auditor's report. Um, I don't know your paging number, but it'd be the first uh, uh, report of the financial statements. And as the header says, independent auditors report, so if you've got that, you'll know. Now, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there might be two reports in there, Brandon. There's one for the regular audit, and then there's one for a special audit that had to do with COVID money. And the reason we did two separate ones is, um, if, if all of your money was, was for coronavirus. And, and you reach certain criteria, certain levels, we would be able to, and we did, we're able to just do an agreed-upon procedure audit. The benefit to that is it saved you money. Because number two, we didn't have to do as much work, so, so that's a good thing. So that's why you might have a second. Uh, report in there. And then you also have the primary independent auditor's report. And it starts off by talking about the opinions. And you'll mo, you'll notice several times. It, it uses the term modified cash basis. Which is an acceptable method uh, that the state allows us to use. Normally, they, they would want you to do generally accepted accounting practice. Or GAAP, um, but the state of Oregon has allowed you to use the modified cash basis. Of accounting, and you do that for, for all of your, your funds and all your activities, your business-type activities. All your major funds, they're all under a uh. Modified cash basis. Uh, in our opinion. Uh, the financial statements have been presented fairly in all material respects. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information for the city. What that means is that we applied, everything that we did was applied across the board for the audit. We didn't just pick and choose. Oh, here's a good fund, we'll look at that one, or here's a bad fund, we wanna stay away from that. Everything turned out really well. Um, based on our tests. Done, we found no errors, everything was recorded accurately and properly. Uh, and that goes to the, the quality of the staff that you've got working for you. Basis of opinion, again, it's a modified cash basis. And we perform the audit under generally accepted auditing standards. Which is part of the standards we have to follow in order to issue a clean opinion. I should have said that right off the bat. You have a clean opinion. You can't get better than that, so again, uh, pat yourself on the backs for, for doing such a great job. The rest of the, the, the report talks about. Uh, your responsibility, and you do have responsibility. It's, these financial statements, we audited them, but they're not ours. They're, they are your numbers. They, it is your audit. We simply come in and do a lot of policies and, or follow. Policies and procedures and figure out what you guys are doing, and, and then make sure that you, you did what you told us you were going to do. If you didn't, then we would have some additional letters or additional remarks. So everything turned out really well from that standpoint. Um, and like I said, these financial statements are yours. You take responsibility for them. I just come in and tell you, we saw everything, it looked good, um, carry on. Um, moving on. Uh, it next is the management's discussion and analysis. And this is done by, uh, Brandon puts this together, and I gotta say, this is one of the best ones I've seen. For a, for a small city, there's a lot of effort put into this M D N A. You can tell by reading it and the amount of detail, so. So again, congratulations on that, it's fantastic. I see. I see. Clients much larger than yours that don't. Don't come near as, as detailed and accurate as you do, so, so thank you for that. It makes our job a whole lot easier, too.
Thank you.
Um, you've probably gone through this. If you have number questions, it, it's best to, to uh. To ask Brandon, and these numbers are so old, by now, everyone probably has moved on from them, but. Um, I won't go through them. What I like about the M D N A, other than yours came out so clean, is it gives you a two-year comparison. I mean, one of the things. With a, with a governmental financial statement is, it mostly just shows you one year's worth of activity. I know when I'm looking at financial statements, I want a two-year comparison. I wanna know what happened last year. Compared to this year, and that's, that's what this M D N A does for you. On a small snapshot, it gives you a two-year comparison, so you can kind of see. You know, what did program revenues do this year? What did they do last year? What did cash do this year compared to last year? And so like I said, it's just, it's a real nice uh, two-year comparison. After that, then we get into the financial statements, and the first statement is a statement of net positions. Uh, basically, it's, it's what we used to call a balance sheet. Is a statement of net position, and because you're cash basis, modified cash basis, you're not gonna see on this statement, you won't see debt. You'll find that in the financial statements. You won't find prepaid, you won't find accounts receivable, you won't find normal accounts that you might find in a commercial business. So that's why it's considered a modified cash basis, cause it's basically cash in, cash out, is what you're reporting on. After that, there is a uh, statement of activities, which basically shows your revenues and expenditures by program. And then we get into the governmental funds standalone, uh, or balance sheet, and this breaks down the governmental funds and shows you. It, it's got general fund, street fund, streets, SDC parks, and then other. And the other is a conglomeration of four or five different accounts, and we just uh, roll those up together to make it easier for readability. Then we have the enterprise or proprietary funds. You have two, which is normal. You have water operations and sewer operations. Thought I saw, okay. And then you've got, again, proprietary funds for the, for the change in the statement of revenue and expenses, so it shows. Not a two-year comparison, but it shows water operations standalone and sewer operations standalone, so you can kind of see. Um, how each of those departments. Performed. Then we get into like statement of cash flow statements, which. In a nutshell, takes you through the balance sheet, through the income statement, and tells you what did you spend on cash? And the, the bottom line shows how much your cash increased or decreased. And overall, in the proprietary funds, you had almost a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in cash. Uh. So that's fantastic. Then we get into the footnotes. No big changes in the footnotes this year, uh, so they should be equivalent to the prior year. These are, these financial statements will, they'll give you a breakdown by fund. They'll give you a description of what the fund is and a definition. Which I really like, it tells you which were major funds. Which were proprietary funds, and, and what the revenue source was. Um, and what the expenditure sign was. There may be, and I haven't looked recently, but there could be some changes. Uh, Brandon, in the footnotes uh, for new pronouncements. The only one I can, off the top of my head right now, uh, crew vacation. Uh, but again, you guys are on modified cash, so it's, it's not gonna affect your financial statement, but somewhere down the road. Uh, you may decide you wanna convert to an accrual basis, because you wanna go for an act for, which is a special financial statement that. Takes up a lot of Brandon's time. And we have quite a few uh, clients that, that have done that as well. Uh, then we get into. Um. Specific footnotes, cash and cash equivalent, tells you what you've got in there, what makes it up. Um, long-term debt, as I mentioned, you don't have long-term debt on your financial statements. But we have it in the footnotes. Uh, and you'll see that you've got, you've got direct borrowings and indirect borrowings. Uh, the one thing that you don't have. And it would be a monumental task, is fixed asset records. Um, I don't know if that has been a uh. A consideration in the past, but that would take a great deal of time and effort. If you decided to go GAAP basis financial statements, and if you decided you wanted to go for a special uh, achievement. You would have to come up with those records, um, and it would be very time-consuming and, and possibly uh, very expensive. I'm not trying to talk you out of it, I'm just kind of wanna make sure you understand what that would mean. Um. Moving past that, we get into everyone's favorite pension plan footnotes that nobody understands. That's why I moved past it. Uh, then we get into the supplemental information. This is just more of a breakdown. The biggest thing in the supplemental information is. Uh, it gives you a budget to actual comparison. Uh, which is required by um, state of Oregon. And that goes on for most of the way back, and as I had mentioned, you had no violations. Uh, in these, if, if you would have had an over expenditure, it would have been specifically called out. Then we get into the very that last section, which is the compliance section. Uh, and this is where, um, this is a special report for Oregon minimum standards required by the state of Oregon. And it goes through and tells you there's uh, half a dozen, almost a dozen bullet points down below that you're required to address. We, we addressed those, we looked at those, uh, we did cer, a minimal amount of testing to make sure you were following. Uh, what the intent of, of uh. Those items were. And then if you would have had any violations, uh, it would have been following down, and you didn't have any. Again, that's it, congratulations on that. It makes everybody's life a lot easier. That's all I got.
Okay.
Well, Devin, I, I got a question. I know, and I, I have black counsel, though, but just for public consumption, and just so they can hear, not from me. Our general fund looks very healthy, you know, four hundred plus days of, of, of a rainy day fund. Um, how is that in comparison to? Other cities in Oregon? Obviously, a lot of other cities are having some issues, but with, with what you see, how, how, how are we striking with the? With the general fund reserves compared to our peer cities?
You are, as you mentioned, you are extremely healthy, and that's one question that more and more has been coming up, and it's really difficult to. To answer the question, because you have to take into account. Um, is it all rainy day fund? Are you transferring money from one fund to the other to, to, to build that up artificially? Um. Have you, have you set a projection over the next five or ten years? To know what you're gonna need and how you're gonna get there? Is it gonna be in the proprietary funds, general fund, or special revenue funds? Um. I, I wish I could give you a percentage, um, but I don't have one, it's different for everybody, but. But you are hel, as healthy or healthier than a lot of cities, definitely your size. Um. And even, you're healthier than some of those larger ones that are maybe half again as big, so, um, you're on the right track.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any question?
It's interesting that being considered healthy means you have no taxpayer money that we haven't spent.
Well, it's not that we haven't spent it, we're just. Not in a deficit. Um, real quick, Brandon, uh, page thirty-two, and this is just fine details, but I just don't, be out of respect. To these people, um, those. It's the listing of council members. I'm assuming those were the council members of, on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes, they were at the beginning of this fiscal year, whoever was in the seat, so then this coming one, we will have.
Okay, so, so it's not the council members that were sitting on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four?
No, sorry, the one, it was the ones who were, who were part of the previous budget.
Okay, I just wanna.
So, yeah, so the twenty, so July.
So the first day of the budget season, whoever was twenty-three to, to twenty-four, July first. So the first day of the budget season, whoever was twenty-three to, to twenty-four, July first, two thousand twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to, I didn't wanna tie people's names to this if it wasn't, but it sounds like it's correct. Okay.
We, we all know who did all the work, you know, last fiscal year. I mean, we only had, one of those, one of those council members was only here for one meeting. You know, so these are the councils that were there, so.
Okay.
We all know you guys did the work, and you were the policymakers, but.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I, we just had not so much turnover, but, okay. Um, thank you for your, uh, time meeting with us tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and Brandon, thank you for, I know the amount of work that you put in to get us to the point of such a easy-to-absorb audit presentation.
It's about sixty pages.
Well, yes, okay. And that was just discussion, so no action item is needed. Um, so yeah, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Fully wanna say. Um, so nine B presentation alone, so now we've added nine C, which is wastewater treatment updates, so. Guess who's coming back to the podium?
Welcome back, Brandon.
I mean, I'll hear that's Brandon, but I know he'll yield it to.
Well, you just keep yielding. So he, he told me I was gonna talk about this when I walked in the door.
Okay.
All right.
So the waste water facilities.
I'll let you team it together.
The wastewater facilities plan, um, we started talking about it last, last budget, carried over to this budget, um. The reason why I went to Gordon here is cuz I, I need to know too, and for Greg, cuz we have a lot of issues with the wastewater plant, and it's coming. So, coming on Monday's budget projection is gonna be about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, just the dredge of lagoon. Um, but things that we need to start thinking about are the screens, those are ha- over a half million dollars, and there's a lot of things we need to have discussions on. And, um, like I mentioned before, the state says we can't loan any money out because your rates are very, very low. So these, as we start thinking about the sewer rate study and what this looks like for longevity, I just kinda wanted Gordon to, cuz he's still working on that. So I just wanna see what he's been working on and absorb some of that information after we head into the budget season. So, I'll defer to you, so sorry.
Yeah, don't wanna put you on the spot for anything that you don't feel concrete numbers on it, but.
No, that's fine. Um, I'll just do a brief description of what a facility plan is.
Okay.
Cuz I know a lot of people don't do them, so they're not quite sure. So, what a facility plan is, is looking at your entire sanitary sewer system. So that's the collection pipes, the pump stations, the treatment plant. And we're looking at them with regards to what do you got? What's the capacity? What's the condition? And how does it match up to code and regulation? Right now, and twenty years down the road. So it's a twenty-year, uh, look ahead, and that's per state requirement. Facility plans look at twenty years. So we take your existing population and say, where is it gonna be in twenty years? We use P S U, uh, population center data to do that, and then based on those projections, we project your flows and your loads, and we compare it to what you have now. And what I can say right now is that your collection system is in pretty good shape. Um, I just had a meeting today with, uh, the modeler, and that you don't have any capacity issues in your collection system. You do have some older pipes, some concrete pipe that's like sixty years old. Okay, so we don't, we don't know what it looks like inside, but we know that that's getting towards the end of its design life. And so what we will say is you ought to start doing some repairs or replacement on those. None of that is imminent, but you probably wanna start doing that.
Before it becomes imminent.
Before it becomes a problem. So, problems in collection systems or pipes collapse, uh, and then it plugs and overflows, or there's a small hole in your pipe, and the soil starts going down. And because it's gravity, it just takes it away, and you get a sinkhole. And you never know that you're gonna have a sinkhole until it collapses, and you've probably seen those pictures, so. I'm not saying you have that issue. I'm saying you've got some old pipe that probably oughta start taking care of. Um, you could do that on a, like, yearly basis, you could budget, okay, I'm just throwing numbers out. Um, let's do a hundred thousand dollars worth of pipe replacement yearly for the next ten years, something like that. Um, so, nothing imminent, you're just taking care of business. Your pump stations, in general, are doing pretty well. Of course, we know the issue at Canyon View. And, you know, this, uh, what we're doing will make that pump station up to snuff with regards to D E Q standards, give you some reliability. Suction lift pump stations are notorious. Uh, sometimes they're like a rock and they just work forever. Other times, they continue to lose prime, and you gotta go down there, and so they're not as reliable as a submersible station. And so we'll probably have it in the facility plan that, hey, let's replace that one and your other one with submersible stations. Those are significant projects. Those are like million-dollar projects. Um, again, not, oh my gosh, we gotta do it right now. Everything's failing. But there, there's something that the city, uh, should consider. Your biggest issue is at your treatment plant. Um, it's got capacity, it's just, there's all sorts of issues with it. So, your headworks, which is the pieces of equipment before your actual treatment process.
So we walk up the steps, and we see with all the rags and the tea, and it looks like it's being held together with electrical tape? We've all seen that? That's what he's talking about. You have, you will.
Picturing.
Right.
You can have a tour when the weather gets nice and steamy.
Yeah, picture it all.
Yeah.
So anyway, the headworks, right now, you have a screen, the screen is failing. You don't have what's called grit removal, which is little pebbles and whatnot that come down the sewer. They go right through your screen, they start filling up your tank. Uh, you don't have a way to get that out. So one of the things that we, uh, will be recommending, regardless with what you do with the rest of the treatment plant, is you need a new headworks. You need a screen and grit removal. We know that the screen is failing right now, and so there's a, there's kind of a conundrum that the city is gonna have to, um, wrestle with and work with. Um, the screen is failing, it could fail any, any minute, so do we replace that screen right now? And it sits there for five years until we do the big treatment plant project, and then we put in a new headworks. So if you replace the screen now, which is a significant project, could be half a million dollars, then when the treatment plant upgrade is done, that may have to be replaced, so it'd only be an interim fix. So that's, that's a conundrum, cuz that's a lot of money.
So fix it because it's gonna need to be fixed, but it's gonna have to be replaced again when we.
Right. So that's, uh, because it, it's only a screen. It doesn't have the grit removal part of it. Um, so there's other work that would have to be done. So that's one of the things that we knew needs to happen. Um, there are various things about your treatment plant that are a problem. Um, you've got filters on the end, they're in steel tanks, they're out in the sun, they're like a cooker. And it's heating up your, your effluent, and so you're not meeting the temperature requirements. So something's gotta be done with that.
Well, you have the, the summertime, I mean, Chad did that, but I mean, to kinda help us with, with, but, yeah, that's not, yeah.
It's just a get-by thing, so, uh, and that equipment's old and outdated. Uh, your U V system, which is disinfection, is old and outdated. I don't even know if you can replace with in-kind equipment anymore. It's harder and harder to do the, uh, operation maintenance when you can't find the parts. So I, I've seen that happen in other treatment plants. They have equipment that's twenty years old. Nobody makes it anymore, even on controls. Uh, so that's one of the things you're running into, is you've got some old equipment that's, uh, past its life and hard to find replacement for. So, there's going to be a, uh, large treatment plant upgrade project. And we're looking at five options, two of them are mandated by D E Q, you have to look at them. One of them is do nothing. And so what's the impact of doing nothing?
Pounds of closing.
Right, you're, you're gonna continue to blow your permit. That's what's gonna happen, so. Uh, we have to put it in, but that's not really an option. Number two, regional. You have to look at it, and so what does that mean? Really what that means is, uh, putting a pump station where your treatment plant is pumping it to McMinnville. Yeah, that sounds simple. It will probably be one of the more expensive things you can do. Because big pump station, six miles of pipeline? And then you're probably gonna have a buy-in fee
Yeah.
to McMinnville, maybe S T Cs. And we don't know if they have capacity, so there might need to be improvements at their treatment plant to take what you have. So that's, we'll look at it. Potentially it works out, but what I've seen in other communities is it's, it's pretty expensive. Uh, so those are two options we'll look at. Then we have three options for the treatment plant, and right now, that's what we're doing. We're, we're putting together dollars for those options. One of them is, um, upgrade the existing S B R treatment plant. The tanks are plenty big enough. So let's just update. New headworks, new filters, there's some internal pump stations that need to be updated. There's a bunch of stuff that needs to be happened, so we would be looking at, we, well, we are putting together costs for doing that. Another option is changing the process, but using the same tankage. And that's, um, I always get the acronym wrong, so I'm not gonna say it. But e- essentially, it's a system of sludge, which is the solids, where you allow the sludge to age and grow, it gets bigger, and it actually gives you more treatment. It's a biological treatment, so we get more and better treatment within the same footprint that you have. So we're costing out that one as well. And then the last option that we'll look at is like the Cadillac. Put in what they call an N B R. So, it's a, a membrane that's so fine that nothing can get past it. And so we just build an entirely new plant. That will set you for the future and probably anything that comes up in regulations, but it's gonna be expensive. So, we'll have all those options. We're not gonna say you need to do this or that, and we've already vetted these options with staff. So staff has said, yeah, let's go after those three options. And then the decision on that is really a discussion. And it becomes a funding issue, too.
Does the state of Oregon have any financial incentives for upgrading these systems?
There's funding for doing this type of work. Uh, there's federal funding, although who knows what's happening with that, cuz that's all sort of up in the air. Uh, there's also state funding. There are grants, and there are, uh, loans. And there are loans with forgiveness, which is an interesting program. Uh, so there are all sorts of funding packages. We'll lay out, here's all the opportunities, here's who you need to talk to. Um, so then it's a matter of putting out applications and, and putting together a package, which can take a while.
And that's when I had mentioned, um, the state of Oregon, I, I reached out to them, and they mentioned that our rates weren't, uh, the collateral in our rates were too low, that they wouldn't be able to, um, finance the same thing until we brought our rates back up significantly. I wanna say it was like nineteen or twenty dollars a household.
Like raising them that much?
What's up?
Raising them another nineteen to twenty?
They said they saw that meeting our, our income, our income levels and where we should be at, but we also haven't had a what, a, 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 a water rate that, we haven't had the sewer rate study yet, and that, and that's gonna identify other things, so.
So what's next on, like, what's our timeline? What's?
Well, we wanna finish this, uh, this fiscal year. So then you can sit down and start planning.
Because we'll go to, we'll probably hopefully go to Deb to contract that after you finish your.
Then it goes to Deb. She looks at S T Cs, she looks at rates. Now, obviously, rates don't have to just, you can stair-step them up, right? Um, so what any funding agency will look at anymore is, do you have enough money to operate and maintain this system if we give you the money to build it? And the reason they do that is because back in the seventies, uh, when they gave out the money, nobody had rates, and nobody maintained their, their facilities, and they all went kaboom. And, and so that, that, that's the result. They're saying, okay, now we wanna know that you're collecting enough to operate this facility, uh, in a good manner. So that's why that comment's coming. There will also be a lot of other permitting that goes along with this, environmental permitting. You don't wanna do that until you know what the funding agency is, because each funding agency has slightly different requirements. So once you know the funding, then you can walk through, okay, now we know, uh, how we need to do the environmental permitting.
So Brandon, when's the next update or whatever?
Um, I, so after you get your draft, I'll sit down with the D E Q.
Uh, draft, I'll sit down with you guys first.
And then we send it to D E Q.
Yeah, and D E Q reviews it.
And then it comes to the council to approve it formally, and then at that time is when we'll start having the discussions on, okay, getting a sewer rate study done based on just the deliverables of the, of the sewer plant, and then that can take four to five.
It'll be a couple of months before we get another update.
Well, well, it'd probably another month or two before I can give you an update, but it won't be through the Q. And once you give it to D E Q.
Whatever their timeframe.
We don't have control over their timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
Something in maybe twelve, eighteen months, we'll have a discussion on at least where we see the future of the wastewater. But I also worried about the headworks, though, so like, getting the money for the headworks, and then that's something we need to have a conversation on. If you wanna spend.
That's why, I guess, maybe I'm getting at is when, what, what needs, what and when is our next thing that needs to go on?
I mean, we can have that discussion on Monday, but then that becomes a very serious conversation, and I don't know if we're prepared to have that conversation yet. So, and, and because the, the sewer fund is our one fund where it's, we have S T Cs, which is good, but, um, I don't think the S T Cs can be. We have SDCs, which is good, but um I don't think the SDCs can be used on the headworks because it's not a capacity replacement, right? It's operating, it's operations and maintenance, so that would be coming out of our enterprise, which is based off our rates.
When do you feel comfortable with the?
I mean, I don't really feel comfortable at all. I mean, it's a hard conversation to have.
Uh, well, yeah, but I I mean, I think this. Saying we understand that we're inheriting. No pun intended, but you know.
I mean, we 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 can talk on Monday at the budget committee and what I propose for sewer rates next year. Um, last year, I I I I requested uh sewer rate and the budget committee and council approved the higher one. That can always be, you know, I'm recommending a dollar fifty next year. This may be a conversation where we may need to do more. To start easing that burden, what come, but those are conversations that you as policymakers and the budget committee need to have. Because you'll be the ones answering for those decisions, and I can only go, you know, we still have the water rate fiasco. Whatever we do, that will not happen on my watch, because I'm going to make sure I'm I'm handholding you throughout that process. Because we're not having another town hall again, and we're not reversing the rates. What we do and what this council decides, we're gonna have to eat that and just go, so.
So maybe get a second vote for Monday and then twenty eighth when we reconvene.
I just don't want to, you know, hearing about the screens and stuff, I want to make sure that. It's, yeah, it's not a one and done conversation, I understand that. It's not a simple fix, it's not a cheap fix, but I think. We owe it to you and vice versa, and to our citizens that we. Before things become more imminent, that we, even if the update is, hey, we're still working on this step. Think regular updates right now would probably. Be good.
And it's it's just, it's unfortunate because like Gordon had mentioned, we're literally, if we if we if we find the money and say, let's put those screens in. You're literally wasting a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years, because like Gordon said, in five years, we're gonna have to replace them if we want to start to build out. So how how can we swallow that wasting money? But then we waste money, then what happens then? Little bit of crap, and then we have to worry about everything that deals with that.
The next conversation is which which roll of the dice do we want to take with that?
It'll be a hard conversation to have, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And and I think part of that conversation has to be with Greg and the guys down at the treatment plant. Which is, can you keep that thing going? And what does it take to do that? It'll take extra labor.
Which then we're eating that cost too, yeah.
Well, they're doing that instead of.
But definitely, yeah, the man, how we're still, you know. Okay, so.
So one other comment, based on the lagoon. So with regards to the sludge lagoons. You've got a lot of carrying capacity there. You don't have to say we have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand next year. You wanted to spend sixty thousand and just take some of it out. That's okay.
Okay.
It it's.
Take out as much as this buys us, kind of thing.
Take out as much as you can financially.
Take out.
Take out. Because you have carrying capacity. I mean, before we started this sludge. Uh, removal process, I think it'd been twenty years. Before anything was taken out. Of course, the sludge was up of the. The liquid level, there's islands out there, and it was like, oh, so you don't want to wait that long, but. Point being, it's not an all or nothing. You can take bites.
Okay.
And we're not even sure if they need to be dredged this next fiscal year. Gordon and his team are are working with me on. Getting you all that information to know if we even need to even worry about budgeting for it.
Okay, thank you for your time, Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Lewis. No more questions?
I think that's the last of Gordon's up and down, right?
Or later.
Run before go away.
Thank you, Gordon. Have a great night. Get home safe, please.
Okay, ninety city administrative review process, uh, Brandon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So um my good old fashioned yearly review comes up uh in June. Um, I think last year's went pretty smoothly. I recommend going through that. You all know Scott, it's a service that we that we already. Is included as being a member of the CAG. I know he sends out surveys of you all, and then I do staff surveys and community surveys, et cetera. Um, so I would recommend doing that, and you're all okay. This doesn't really need a more of a boat, this is more of just, hey, we're cool to go in this way. Um, but you can also, you can also decide to go alternative route if that's what you choose.
It was a great process.
The only thing I did um chat with Brandon about is I would like to reach out to Scott and just make contact so that it's not just Brandon. Making his own contact for his own review.
Well, Scott last year came and met with us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Okay, um, any further discussion on that, or is everyone content with continuing on with Scott and the CAG?
We're content.
Okay. So that leads us to department reports, and Brandon, I'm gonna completely whole send or hand over ten to you instead of going to ABC, and you can.
I mean, unless there's any concerns on any reports that were presented, I'll go into some notes.
Go for it.
All right, just real quick, um, so next month will be coming to you for the first part of a two-step resolution for the state E-perming that we're. Um, we're all trained up and we're getting ready to go full force. When we approved the rates last year, um, we actually had to approve them like, like the month before the rollout. So and that's okay, Jamie and I talked with the state about it. We need to officially approve the rates um that we currently have. And uh in May, for for the rollout in June, when it officially gets going, and it's officially the E-perming platform. But then also a second step is going to be if we want to do what I suggested last year, instead of doing these gigantic. Um, increases for permits every year, we just follow the CPIU, the. The construction index report, and just every year, we just kind of like what we'd like to do with the methodology and everything, every year we just. Follow the CIPU, so if that's something um that the council would want to do, the second part, that would come in July. Um, CDW cleanup went really well, um, we had it done at about like nine forty-five, ten o'clock, thank you to Greg and. And Robert and Brandon and um Zach and Greg Goulart, all the members who came out to help us. Um, looking at how how we're growing, I'm gonna need to go look at adding some more bins next year, which will be more of a cost. Or there's a possibility, I did find out from David, uh, the city attorney, that Lincoln City does do like curbside pickup. And I think that would alleviate some of the issues with um. Originally, the cleanup day was to alleviate a lot of the code enforcement issues that we were having and property cleanups. And those people get notices with encouragement of going to the cleanup day, and it seems to be some of the same people I see every year. Who.
Yeah.
May not need to come to trash day. Um, so I'm, we we're gonna try to find ways of encouraging to get the people who really need it to clean up.
So maybe it's time to kind of evaluate.
May- maybe narrow it a little bit um to see. I just, I I saw, I saw the same family three years in a row drop off a couch three years in a row, and I'm all like, how are you getting a couch every year and dispersing it?
Facebook Marketplace.
But how are you getting, yeah, like, I love, I love the idea of. Of dump day, but the same people that can get it to us can get it to the dump, so are we actually. Meeting the needs of those people that either physically or vehicular. Can't get it there, so.
Right, and so um Recology's gonna get back with me if they do a pickup, what it looks like. So I'll share, I'll keep some updates with you all on how that works.
Can you confirm real quick, just because there was some community discussion, the empty bins that that some citizens saw you turning away around nine o'clock or so. Were not ones that we had pre-ordered.
Correct.
Recology took it upon themselves to bring.
Yes, they brought them down and didn't approve them with me, and it's like, oh, hey, you know, they charged them, like, no, 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 I was like, you charged.
That's that's what, based off of the information you had given me, and then that's what I had shared with community that. Know that we weren't turning away bins that were available. They were bringing them in case we wanted to purchase them, but we didn't have the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I thought that we didn't have the budget, but for them, soon, we're just gonna drop them off and we're gonna get an invoice, you know. Um, and then also, um, Ken, when Kennedy uh sent uh over Recology the flyer, they approved everything we put on the flyer. Because every year, we've been following the same flyer, and then now there's so much things that the transfer stations aren't taking, like. They didn't want us to take electronics anymore, they don't want us to do this, they don't want us to do um barbecue grills, I'm like, next year. You 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 have it cut off by February, if not, you're gonna have to beat the cost of this, because I mean, like, I can't, we can't change this every every year, you need to communicate that, so. We'll be on that. Um, don't forget strategic planning. First session is Saturday, April nineteenth at nine AM. Um, for those attendants who are going to the Northwest Christian Church's egg hunt, I was able to ask them to start later.
Lafayette Community.
Lafayette Community Church, sorry, Lafayette Community Church is doing their yearly egg uh egg hunt, and I asked them if they could move it back a little bit, so they'll be starting about noon. So hopefully, if everybody's, if everybody's good, and everybody, everybody gets their stuff done on time, we can get out a little early and maybe go to the egg hunt. So, so as long as it's a productive day, and I I hope we can be out of there by eleven thirty. We'll have breakfast ready to go.
While you're on the calendar.
Yeah.
Just run through all our dates for April.
Yes. Uh, April nineteenth, strategic planning, that's gonna be at the community center, that's not gonna be here, so when you, when you go over, it'll be there. Um, and then April twenty-sixth from ten to twelve is our community resource fair.
Oh, no, you don't have to do that.
Um, that'll be the, that'll be from ten to twelve, um, that's when we have all the nonprofit partners in the area, um, provide resources and whatnot. Um, and then.
Budget meetings.
And then the budget meeting is gonna be Monday. Six thirty. And then another one on the twenty-eighth. Very active, active April.
No.
And the budget committee meetings are probably the.
And those have been pre-approved and scheduled.
Yes.
Sold, proved those.
Yep, they approved those, so I I would think the next three meetings in April, the three biggest things you're gonna do all year.
The twenty-eighth is also.
Group the budget and like strategic planning for the next, the next three to four years.
And all of these dates are on the calendar on the website?
Uh, not the May ones, we'll get with that tomorrow, yeah, we'll we'll update the May ones, um. And then on your calendars, they should be on your calendars as well. May eighth, which is our regularly scheduled city council meeting, we will have the second strategic planning follow-up meeting, that's when you can start putting the pen to paper, how we're gonna get things done. Um, I'm gonna try to make sure that the first part of the agenda is just quick and easy, I'll see what I can put under consent agenda. If it's something controversial, and then um we can um finish the second part of the strategic planning session.
And based on strategic planning, when is everyone's um emails to our strategic planner?
Uh, they would do today at five thirty PM.
Oh, I got mine yesterday.
What? Yes, you did, Councilor Carr as well. Councilor Bros did too.
If if somebody, by reason somebody um wasn't able to make it, I would advise, there's a phone number in that email to give him a call first thing tomorrow morning.
And you're off the hook for it unless you really want to share some. It was basically, it was basically us um sharing. Giving some pro or pre, pre-suggestions of things that are on our personal radar as counselors.
Kind of putting it together so we can finally stop being reactive, because the 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 first two years have been very reactive on a lot of policies. Now it's time that we're all comfortable, we all know each other, the election's done and over with, now we can start working on proactive policies. And finally start being, being proactive, this is what we're doing, instead of doing it now, instead of having to be forced to do something.
And our Oregon ethics financial statements are due correct.
Yes, those are April fifteenth, and I'll get once, I'll I'll get with you tomorrow sometime, and we'll kind of talk over some of that stuff. Um, water negotiations, we've already engaged with Dayton, um, myself, Gordon and David have also working on what we're going to um. Look at when we talk about compensation, what that looks like for uh coming to council and executive session, but also what it looks like for the. For the ratepayers and taxpayers of Lafayette. They're pushing, I know Mac Water Light and Dayton, Mac Water Light will give verbal, a verbal okay. Um, next week at their board meeting to say if they're willing to finance the debt for. At their commission meeting, yes. And if, because if they say no, then that puts, that puts this whole deal on the back burner, at least. It may be a more longer-term solution, but um if talking with uh John, the executive director, he doesn't feel that the board of commission. Um, would 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 want to do that, so then um after that, then we'll know, we'll get much more aggressive on that. I gave um David and Gordon and myself till April twenty-fifth to have our official negotiation. We want to be proactive in the negotiations, because we have certain things that Dayton really doesn't understand in terms of. Things we're looking at, so by us providing that negotiation first, it's like, hey, this is kind of what we're looking at. And you know, this is a land in the sand, um, but all that discussion will be had in executive session, because that would be under uh negotiations of contracts. Um, so, but they're looking to have that hooked up through us uh July first. So they're they want to move very quickly, and that'll probably take some, maybe a special meeting or two, some IGAs. But they're looking to, if this were to happen and council's on board, July first.
Okay.
And we'll talk more about that in the budget and how I've accounted for that on Monday. Uh, regional water authority, um, the CAG has applied for a grant to start um doing some. Technical planning around the regional water system and what that looks like. Obviously, we have ownership stake being on the regional water authority. And I think we have like thirteen percent water rights of the uh the authority, something in the tens.
Is that the board that Councilor Carr was on?
Yes, yes. Um, so they're talking, they're just talking about the planning and what it looks like, it seems now that Dayton is looking to come to the table, I know Amity is also in discussions. As well as Dundee, so I think there's more cities looking at coming in. Some cities feel differently than others, especially we're at a. We have a higher ownership stake in the in the regional water system than others, just because we were earlier in the game, and we have, we have more to bring to the table in terms of collateral. Than other cities, so how that looks in the next ten, fifteen years, that'll be uh, that'll be a longer-term project. And then um YCOM, I am on the YCOM um executive committee, uh, we had our first. Initial discussion at the budget this week, we have budget committee meetings next month, but the executive director told us to plan for a ten percent increase. Last year was twelve percent. Um, I came to this council, said I think it's gonna be eight percent next year to kind of top out at a twenty. Um, just to kind of give you updates, when we talk about healthy fund account, we have four hundred days of Friday Day Fund. Uh, YCOM hasn't like won, they have fifty-six thousand dollars in reserves. So, just like us, just like any other organization, they're gonna have to, you know, get their reserves back up. Uh, because they literally have no savings, so they're looking at coming to the cities with a ten percent. I've accounted for that. Unfortunately, there's other cities who are bigger in 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 this territory who are gonna be facing even bigger number crunches when they get those numbers, but. Um, from the executive director, she said this probably would be the last big uh major. Uh, service fee increase for the users of the system, and after that, it'll be slowly but surely as go, but obviously, all this is at the discretion of. Um, um, my peers on the board, so. I'll send that.
Okay, um, so down to loving council reports, uh, Council President Paulson.
No, unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the. The last LDA meeting event, because it was held at five.
I was gonna make it, I'll touch real quick in my mayor's report, knowing that you were unable to attend. Uh, Councilor Gilligan is, um, excuse, uh, Councilor Carr, will anything to report or share?
Nope, nothing this time.
Councilor Bros, anything to report or share?
Um, I sat in with uh two of the CAG and fireboard meetings. And uh they're just doing normal business, they're starting to look at their budget and. Um, it doesn't, right now, it doesn't look like Yam Hill is interested in uh teaming up with that more.
Yeah, from what I heard, it looks like CAG may have said, you know what, there's something, there's some issues going on, now you need to take care of that before we look at absorbing it.
Right, yeah, so, so, nothing, nothing new, nothing too exciting.
Okay, Councilor.
The one thing I guess is exciting is our our newest, they're working on a new handbook for the employees, and that may affect. Some of the folks that that are here also.
Okay, okay.
Okay, uh, Councilor Kent, nothing to report? Okay, um, Councilor Mackey, you're off the hook since you have to report in the last hour, um.
He's like, what did I sign up for?
Mayor's report, bear with me, just like Brandon had a busy month. I always said had a busy month alongside with Brandon with some stuff that came up. First and foremost, I received a letter from um. The Department of Consumer and Business Services uh for the Oregon Occupational Safety and Health Division, or Oregon OSHA. And it just says, we recently conducted a comprehensive safety inspection at your work site located at two sixty Madison Street, Lafayette, Oregon. At this time of inspection, the Oregon Occupational Safety and Health Division Compliance Officer did not observe any safety violations of the Oregon Safe. Employment Act, so we appreciate the effort you have made to provide your employees with a safe and healthy work environment, so thank you, Brandon, for. All the work you've done in order for that letter to reach my desk, um. Okay, so, um, Tuesday, I was able to spend my day down at the state capitol, um, accepted Senator Starr's invitation. To um open the Oregon State Senate with the invocation and um. for their Senate session, and while there, I was able to sit in on the Committee of Education's work session. Um, I also uh, hosted a table at the Newburgh Regional Area Mayor's Fair Breakfast this past Saturday. I want to make it very clear that that was not funded by this um, city at all. Um, and I want to thank Councilor Burrows and his wife along with other people that joined me um, at that function, um, I am actively, this is something that just came up. Um, I'm actively working with our city administrator on engaging with the McMinnville City Library. Um, for those that are not aware, um, they have a budget cut that has, um, they have officially announced that a lot of services that were going out to not within McMinnville City limits um, have been cut unexpectedly, including like the delivery services. And one that hit my radar, so I reached out to them, was to find out what that meant for that summer bookmobile program that's been at Joel Perkins Park. Um, so I learned that that originally was immediately on the cutting block, but was salvaged due to some temporary funds somewhere. A different grant they were able to scramble for because it is such a largely attended one. The, um, the library was like, wait, 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 we gotta, at least for this year, do it. Um, but after this year, it's not funded, so Brandon and I have a meeting this coming week with the library director to find out what the future holds for that program. Um, and what that might look like for us as a city, if it's something that we can either start, and we will be bringing something to the budget committee just about if it went that direction for the city, if we wanted to absorb it, but um, I also though uh, wrote a letter today, last minute request, helping with a grant they're going after for that funding. Um, so we, this is brand new within the last week. Uh, it came across our desk and Brandon and I have been working on that. Um, I was able to attend the LDA meeting, which was the inaugural meeting of the McMinnville and Newburgh uh, Chamber of Conferences. They are now doing an after-hours meetings where they're trying to go together to the smaller cities. Um, that was very well attended. Unfortunately, one of the presenters that LDA had scheduled was not able to be there, so it became more of a meet and greet, but it was a great time to network. Um, I did, I have been following the Yam Hill Board of Commissioners. Um, one of the things that they are currently doing is moving into their new campus building uh, slowly and surely, department by department. Uh, and um their chair, I will acknowledge you in the audience, so it doesn't seem awkward that I'm talking about you, did ask that I make it um, aware that the Assessment and Tax Department, as of April twenty-first, will be located at the new location at four hundred Northeast Baker. And for residents next up also, soon the clerk's office will be starting their transition. Um, and I am, speaking of regional water, I have been working with Mayor King of Amity to facilitate monthly meetups with all the mayors, just for us to make sure we are learning from each other, encouraging each other, and one of the things that we've decided is we really want to be proactive and learn about this regional water uh, discussion and we have actually asked um Kit Johnston, a local farmer, business owner and county commissioner, who um, seems knowledgeable but not tied to a specific city, who might have personal interests to protect, to come and just facilitate that, so I look forward to that. Um, to be proactive and learn more about what the regional water, what's the official thing?
Yeah, Regional Water Authority.
Might look like, um, and at the end of this month, I will be at the Spring LOC Conference in North Bend. My request for scholarship did, did not get approved due to a large number of requests and I just want to also make it clear that I will not be re, asking for reimbursement on food or gas and I am choosing to drive back late the last night to save on that last night of hotel stays. Um, and I think that is it on my end. So, number thirteen, our favorite card.
I'm gonna move to June.
So, in a second.
Okay, all favorites.
Aye.
Okay, waiting a turn.
You have to roll call that one?
No. Because it's not a.